We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those of you who come out, make it to City Hall. Meetings are televised via Channel 35, or you can view us on the website, www.lacity.org. Also, we have remote sites in San Fernando Valley and San Pedro. This meeting is now in session. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon Cardenas Han, Weezer Coretsch, Kikori and Labange, Parks, Perry, Race, Rosenthal Smith, West and Zion Garcetti, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks seconded by Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the salute to the flag.
Mr. Labange, if you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...lost their lives on the seven, seventh, nineteen forty-one. Let's repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosenthal, well, you have an announcement to make?
An announcement?
About Mr. Parks?
Well, sure, if you'd like me to make that announcement. We're all blessed that Bernard Parks was born today, a few years ago, and we want to wish him happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Bill. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, the only reason he does that is he wants to remind me I'm older than him. The only reason he brings that up, and everyone else. This is the thirty-seventh anniversary of my thirtieth birthday.
Very well. Happy birthday, Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, we do have commendatory resolutions for approval.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, we will, Mr. Labange and Mr. Kikori in seconds. I got you off track there for a moment with the birthday, didn't I?
Yes, you did, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda this time?
Let's do that, please.
Items one and two are items noticed for a public hearing.
One and two, one is special for Ms. Perry. On number two?
On item two, council should close the public hearing. Announcement of the tabulation of ballots is scheduled for council session tomorrow.
All right. So, we're gonna take a vote on that?
Yep.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next items, please.
Items three through twenty-four, items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests to continue item three to December fifteenth, two thousand and ten, and item nineteen to January eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and item twenty-four to January five, two thousand and eleven. Further, item, item six has two committee reports on, on file, and a motion is required.
Okay, on the items for continuation, see no opposition, they'll be continued. Mr. Alarcon?
I'd like to call item five special.
Number five special, Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, and then on item six, wanted to move the jobs committee report.
Okay, number six, move the jobs committee report at number six. We'll take a vote on that in a moment. Mr. Weezer?
Number seven special.
Number seven special, Mr. Weezer? Ms. Perry?
Received and filed.
We have, we have number six.
Yeah.
Mr. Alarcon's moving the report.
Uh, this is the old local hire ordinance. It can be received and filed. Yeah. Okay.
Are you in agreement with Mr. Alarcon on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on that momentarily.
Remember this moment.
I'm trying to listen to you, not speaking.
It may not come around again.
We have to pass the jobs committee report in order to receive and file.
Right. We're in agreement.
Very well.
So, we can open the roll.
A monumental day for us.
That's right.
And Mr. Clerk, continue, please. Any other specials?
I believe you were asking for items called special.
Any other specials up to twenty-four? See none on those matters, open the roll. Mr. Parks? Twenty-one special?
No, we'd just like to have that, there's some new information that came in on that. We need to have that go back to committee and ask for that to be re-investigated.
Okay, at twenty-one, we want to do?
On twenty-one, there's subsequent to this report, we received information of additional allegations, and we asked it to go back to committee so housing can investigate.
So, twenty-one will go back to committee? That's the request, okay, twenty-one back to committee. Mr. Labange?
I have a question on number six. Is anybody here for number six? Local hiring, anybody over number six?
We're gonna move the jobs committee report at number six. Anyone here at number six?
I have a question.
You want to hold that on the table?
Yeah, I'd like a question to answer.
Get someone from staff to answer number six, please. We'll hold that on the table at this moment. On the remaining items, any other specials, colleagues up to twenty-four, three to twenty-four?
Do you want the report, number fifteen?
A number fifteen, call number fifteen special.
Mr. President, item four is a commissioner, would you like to hold it on the desk?
Let's hold the commissioner on the desk. On the remaining items, any other specials, colleagues? See none, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next items, please.
Mr. President, items twenty-five through sixty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Items that we have cards, we'll hold those, do you have a list of those? Yes, yes, we do, sir. That would be item forty-three, forty-six, forty-seven, fifty, and sixty. However, there are requests to continue item twenty-six to January, January four, two thousand and eleven.
Fifty-seven, please.
Items fifty and sixty to December fifteenth, two thousand and ten.
Hold on, Mr. Labange.
And item nineteen to January eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Further, there is a request to call item thirty-one forthwith.
Okay, we already did nineteen, we're down to twenty-five, wait a second.
Fifty and sixty, we're continuing to?
Okay, there are a number of continuations. Nineteen, okay. On the continuation without opposition, Mr. Labange, special?
Request for Mr. West at fifty-seven continued one week.
Request on fifty-seven, one week continuation without opposition?
Thank you.
Okay, any other specials, Mr. Parks?
Sixty-six.
Which number?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, Mr. Parks? Colleagues, any other specials? See none of the remaining items? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Miss, on number ten, forthwith, forthwith on number ten. Thank you, Mr. Parks. All right, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Can I ask, Mr. President here, a question here, item fifty, is that correct, Ms. Lisa? The modified coverage plan of the fire department?
Number fifty is continued to December fifteenth, Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much.
December fifteenth.
That also includes those other ones?
Fifty and sixty continuation to December fifteenth.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, we'll take public comment now? Items that aren't on the agenda? General public comment? Begin with Dr. Williams?
Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five Barrett Road, El Sereno, northeast LA. Is it clocked on? Okay. Basically, today there was an effort on the part of the Board and Department of Public Works to start the stormwater process. They have an LID ordinance that's been approved. The LID ordinance establishes what is required in order to protect some of our rivers and streams. However, it also recognizes the political reality, that quite a while ago, there was an ordinance that was proposed to increase the stormwater fee on the LA tax rule. Well, that was stopped by the city council, and it went now through the state legislature and will be added to the LA tax rule anyway. Hopefully, the money will come from LA County down to the LA city for our portion of it. The LID, however, is all ours. The LID says, okay, we need to collect the first three-quarter inch of any rainfall, which we've had recently. However, for those units of less than four, you don't have to collect that much. You only have to collect less than a, probably less than a quarter inch, because all you have to do is have two rain barrels. Make it easy. However, it also means that the apartment owners have to collect four hundred gallons rather than a hundred gallons for the same area. So, there seems to be an inconsistency, which thing goes back as to, is this a fee? Or is this a tax? We are cross-subsidizing from the multifamily, more than four units, to the single family. Politically correct, engineering and financially a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Sergeant at Arms? Can you please quiet down the chambers? There is conversations taking place in multiple locations in the aisles. If you want to have a conversation, please step out of the chambers. The conversations are way too loud. Thank you. Henry Marine?
In regard to my claim, city attorneys and COAs, CAOs refuse to let management personnel know how much money was deferred in trust of LA lawyers for the benefit of city employees hired under MOU thirty-five. Consequently, the principles and interests deferred in lieu of pay since nineteen eighty-nine was not accounted and not rolled over to HERS or NARA or taxed and paid in full through a detriment of taxpayers in fifteen CDs. However, management personnel and commissioners appointed to serve our city officials are expected to know that using public funds to deny or defend against the vested pay and benefit rights of city employees, directly or indirectly, is illegal. Yet, MOU thirty-five shows what each uninsured city attorney and CAO agreed to do at will on behalf of management thereafter. Deny new employees' voice and vote in grievance subject to dismissal. Ignore illegal employment opportunity and affirmative action policies. Ignore IRS pay and pension plan participation, investing, accounting rules. Divert public funds from city employee pension and benefit plans. Make others understand, city employees represented by union hiring hall employees agree to earn ten percent less pay per hour and self-contribute one hundred percent to union contractor benefit plans in lieu of our one hundred percent taxable prevailing sum bi-weekly on a temporary basis. Likewise, on twelve oh eight, Rocky D authorized the NMCO to sign MOU sixty-two. However, I know our mayor and three members of this council carried the prevailing wage bill in the assembly for the benefit of all. Therefore, between April seventh and the twenty-first of July, I informed our horseshoe stewards that city employees must earn its pay and benefits equivalent to some paid by union contractors for light services in LA. In addition, that I know the difference between my vested hours of service as a W2 defined hacker or COLA employee and those as an employee of a union contractors. On October twenty-sixth, Deputy Attorney Mary Jo advised our horseshoe stewards, it's illegal to provide pay and benefits of unequal value to city employees on behalf of our mayor.
Thank you. Bill Hui?
Good morning, Council President and members of the LA City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition, fairhousingcoalition.com. I know that for the last thirty years, certain people who have been running for political office have found it advantageous to demonize landlords because renters are the bigger voting block. But the problem that we have now in LA, thirty years later, is that landlords who cannot afford to stay in business are selling their buildings to developers. These buildings are being torn down, and the poorest of the poor live in these older buildings, and they're becoming displaced, and many of them are becoming homeless. I have a solution to that. I think the city should have either a little tax to help poor landlords so they can have some money to afford better apartments and landlords can get closer to fair market value, thereby landlords can better maintain their buildings. Also, there are bad renters out there who bring crime and violence in their building and put all the other renters at risk. I think the housing department should be subdivided into two units for inspectors. One that understands the problems that landlords go through, and one that understands the problems that renters go through when dealing with a bad landlord. And I think if we could evict the bad renters out of our buildings who cause damage to the building and put us in reek, the quality of life would improve for the decent people who just want some quality of life in their apartment. Also, I've been told that the DWP has a billion dollars in the bank from overcharging consumers. My understanding is that money should go back when they make a profit. I would be in favor of using some of that money to help poor people afford housing, and then landlords can properly maintain their buildings if they have the right kind of cash flow. If we don't have a system that's fair to landlords and renters, more landlords will leave LA and more people become homeless. Nobody wants to see that. Nobody should be homeless in America. My name is Bill Hui, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green?
What a beautiful, what a beautiful speech by Bill Hui, and I guess God wanted him to, to lead into me. As well, happy birthday, I'm, I turned sixty a couple of days ago, so I'm in the same club as you. The reason why I'm here, I'm the victim of an unlawful, illegal eviction, unlawful detainer. I want everybody in city council and watching, my case number is one oh you, one five, six two three, one oh you, one five, six two three, and my report with the housing department is three two three, five seven three, three two three, five seven three. I'm Lawrence Greenblatt, I live in the same apartment at age seventeen, Northwest Palmas, since nineteen eighty-nine. That's over twenty-one years. I was never once late on my rent. I'm being evicted because of a cat that I've had for eleven years. I'm being evicted because of a piano that I've had for twenty-one years. You remember the cat I adopted a few years ago? Well, that cat I had to put to sleep. Now, I'm gonna say right now, I haven't had a one night of sleep in seven days. I've been up all night, cleaning up, every single night. The apartment is spotless. The housing department hasn't been there yet. Over my dead body will I be evicted? If anybody wants to adopt the cat, I will give it up. I'm giving away one of the pianos. This is disgraceful. I could be homeless by the next time you guys meet. My landlord, David Finkelstein, is a slumlord. I will not stand for this. Thank you, Councilman Labange, for referring me to the housing department, but they're not coming till December fourteenth. The unit has been painted in twenty-one years. For six years, the kitchen has been filthy. The paint is peeling in the bathroom. I've got photos, and I want to tell you again, my case number is one oh you, one five, six two three. My housing department case is three two three, five seven three. A lot of nerve to do this during Christmas and Hanukkah. David Finkelstein, you're a slumlord.
Thank you. Mr. Labange is going to meet with you, Mr. Green. Walter Bechtel?
Morning, thank you for accepting my court. I couldn't find the bailiff. Another thing you should know, the, the timing is off on the audio, there, people, whenever they say something, the, what comes, the video is not in sync with what the words are that's coming out of their mouth for the audio. So, I just thought I'd tell you that, because we've got a lot of problems in the past. I want to come and say something today because we're making a decision in the Ninth Circuit Court concerning marriage and other things, and I wanted to say something because I noticed that there's a lot of influence in this city and in this state behind the back, people who rumor things about people, saying that they either are or are not homosexual. I just wanted to make it clear, so people understand, I have no prejudice in this, I just wanted to make it clear, I am not homosexual or gay. And I note that a lot of people feel, well, since Mr. Kaiser's relative, Mr. Bechtel, is gay, then maybe I should be gay, and, well, I just want you to understand that the people that are hurting the state are these people who talk about people behind their back, when there has been no comparison or proof of that. And I think people really need to get the, the information on things before they do something, such as a marriage that was announced, that was not announced here in May, between a person, any entertainment industry that I've known for years, and somebody else. If that person, for example, I think it's still against the law, I don't know, had announced her wedding, which took place on my birthday in May, on May the twenty-second, if she'd announced that, I'd have been able, and other people have been able to say something about before the marriage, but these kind of things are causing trouble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. Thanks. You know, the last time I was here, I talked about Meg Whitman. Here's our analytics. You can see where it goes, and then here's where I talk about Meg Whitman in front of it. It goes up to ninety thousand visitors in one week. In five weeks that the Post was up, we had two hundred thousand visitors. As you may know, we broke the story that Meg Whitman's son beat up his Mexican-American girlfriend, and we put the police report up there. And if you want more, come to us now, because the mystery missile that was in the sky, you want to know the solution to what that was? The island of misguided missiles? It's all on our website. And something about the Kennedy assassination that Clint Hill, the secret agent, the Secret Service agent, revealed yesterday in LA will be up there, too. HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Email us with all your information about crookedness up here, HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Twitter us at HollywoodDems, and we have, we want to ask you to join our Facebook. MTA has three and a half thousand friends. We want to have ten thousand friends. We want to have more friends than MTA. MTA claims that they have the highest outside of the Bay Area, bar in friends. So, you go to Mickey Jackson, befriend Mickey Jackson, my cohort, M-I-K-I-J-A-C-K-S-O-N. So, next time I come here, I can tell you that we have three thousand five hundred and one. And you know, you're not too bad. You're a little crooked, but that's okay. Over at the Board of Supervisors, an thirteen-year-old child hanged himself and died, and the blood of that child is on the supervisors, not on you. For shame, the supervisors. And just because he was Hispanic, a minority, the minority people say, well, it's not their fault. The blood of children!
Thank you. Donna Pyraman in the San Fernando Valley?
Okay, anyway, hello, we can hardly hear you out there, anyway, I have to read it. Anyway, Miriam is not here, she knows the public doesn't care, because they passed, they passed Proposition twenty-two and twenty-five. Again, Van Nuys was ignored. I don't mind the council taking off for Hanukkah, but why can't you do a make-up date? It could be another Friday in the month. Should the first Friday be written in stone? And what about in February fourth, will we take? And what about in February fourth, will we take off for a holiday for Eric Garcetti's birthday? I don't know. I see folks want to have living standards be lower. I see the people want to be able to have more taxes. You did it by passing Proposition Twenty-two and Twenty-five. People will probably let Proposition Thirteen be repealed, so you can have more taxes. Taxes, taxes, you love taxes. I see today CRA is having a field day. They will come out of the woodwork, and finally, every project they started will be, it will be done. It'll be very costly, costly to us, in the billions. This is where the problem is with the CRA and the mismanagement of money. The state will have to make up the shortfall somewhere, folks. It'll be higher gas prices, sales taxes, sales, state taxes, you name it. You want it? MTA will have rail projects that cost a lot more projected. Only way they can make it is the ridership is, and very big, eminent, like the high-speed L.A. to San Francisco. The riderships will have to be immense. So they think they will be higher than Europe to pay for this projected cost. It won't. It will end up being very costly. When the passage of Twenty-five, our liberal politicians have a lot more power. Folks, you have only yourself to blame. Taxes, taxes, we have taxes. God bless the CRA, latency that we love. Anyway, you want taxes? Believe me, you'll get them. You wanted it? Here it comes. Thank you.
Bruce Darian is our final speaker in the San Fernando Valley.
Morning, City Council. It was nice to see some of the council members over some of the Christmas holiday events, starting out over at Topanga Plaza with Mayor Vierigosa and Councilman Zine, and at the Hollywood Christmas Parade with Councilman Tom Labange, and yesterday, or excuse me, the day before, at the Sherman Oaks Toy Drive with Councilman Krikorian. I was part of a very disturbing event on Topanga Canyon a week ago, Monday night. Deer was hit in the road, and was still alive, and I was making, trying to give it assistance. It was alive, and thought that we could get it off the road and save it. Cars were zooming by with complete indifference. People could care less. My life was in danger. People were driving by me at fifty miles an hour. A fellow classmate from Taft High School happened to stop and use his car to block the road, but before that, a taxi cab driver was ready to just mow him down. This issue with what happened at Notre Dame High School last month with the young man being cut down in front of the school, the people that are out there, that are driving, a large majority of the people are clueless as to the magnitude of damage that their cars can do, and the city has to take aggressive steps to reverse this trend of indifference of motorists. Also, there was only a fifteen percent turnout in the governor's race. I'm running for Congress, and I've also started a new party, the Federalist Party. So I get the sixty-day report from the Secretary of State. We only had two and a half million voters come out for the governor's race and for the elections, with seventeen and a half million registered voters in California, not including those that are not registered, that are qualified to register. So the city must do more to engage the public in its affairs. Thank you.
All right, that completes public comment for today. If you are here to speak on an item, your card needs to be turned in before the item is called. We will not accept cards after the item is called. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Sir, that brings council back to items called special. That would bring us to item number one, called special for Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry, number one.
Jan, item one.
Ms. Perry, item number one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Item one is something that we have long awaited, and I'm very pleased to be establishing the Central Avenue Utility District, and I want to thank the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for their commitment to this item. This utility district will help underground approximately two point six miles of overhead utility lines on Central Avenue between Washington Boulevard and Slauson Avenue. The undergrounding will upgrade the power system and save the city money every year, and will transform the look and feel of Central Avenue. Removal of the overhead utility poles will beautify Central Avenue and build on all the work that has been completed on Central Avenue. Now, I just have a minor modification, some technical amendments that's going around right now on this item, so I think that they're on your desk. Can I confirm that the technical amendments for item one are on councilmembers' desks, Mr. Clerk?
They haven't been distributed yet.
Okay.
Can we get those distributed to the councilmembers?
If they haven't been distributed yet, then I think what we should do is hold this item on the desk until they are, and then we can vote on this in its entirety.
Okay. Mr. Labange.
Thank, Ms. Perry, I think, and also thank the Department of Water and Power, although these all have a price tag on them, all of us should look to it as a figure in the future as a tool to use to help beautify communities. And some of the older communities which you represent, Jan, do have some of the oldest power poles and the oldest arms and the oldest connections. So this is a way to beautify that, and I just wanted to stand in support of it, because I think it's an excellent program. It used to be very constant, but after nineteen seventy-eight, they stopped it quite a bit, and it halted. So to get these programs going again will lead to a better Los Angeles, and I just wanted to pledge my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry, that was just signed by me, so it'll be circulated momentarily. Mr. Clerk, we'll hold this on the table, item number one. Next item, please.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, council has twelve members present at this time. Would council like to reconsider item twenty-five, given that it did have an ordinance attached to it?
Let's do number twenty-five. Colleagues, on number twenty-five, on that matter, seeing no one wishes to speak and address that issue, open the roll.
Mr. President, pardon me, that would take two votes. One to reconsider, and then the second one on the actual matter.
Number twenty-five.
Correct.
We voted.
Correct.
So you want to reconsider?
Yes, that would, that would take a vote to reconsider it?
And then we'll vote again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so number twenty-five, vote to reconsider. Open the roll. Close the roll tablet to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now the item for force for a vote, for the ordinance. Open the roll. Close the roll tablet to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Very good. That brings us to item number four.
Number four, that is a commissioner, and that is for the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Ms. Emma Castillo, to the Harbor Area Planning Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Weiser.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and as Vice Chair of the Planning and Land Use and Management Committee, I want to ask for an A vote on this appointment. We heard this item in Plum, and we were excited to hear of Ms. Castillo's interest in serving on this commission and her passion for planning issues and her passion for service to the city of Los Angeles. So, Ms. Castillo, if you could just let the council know a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on this commission, and thank you for your service.
Sure. My name is Emma Castillo, and as I mentioned before Plum, I was born in Harbor City, raised in Wilmington, California, went to school in San Pedro and in Wilmington, California, and I work in Harbor City. So I believe that I would definitely take the stakeholders' health and safety, general welfare and well-being into account, and that I would serve my community with pride as a Harbor Area Planning Commissioner.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. Ms. Perry.
For purposes of clarification on the record, I think that the background check is no longer pending. Is that correct? Who can answer that? City Clerk?
Correct.
So everything's in? Ethics report's in? Background check is in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Mr. Labange.
On behalf of Janice Hahn, I think she would greatly support you and wish you well, and have a focus on that part of the city, which is so important, especially the gateway. So thank you for your service to the people of Los Angeles.
You're very welcome.
Well, now we'll take the vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll tablet to vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. You are confirmed.
Thank you very much. It will be a joy and an honor to serve as a Harbor Area Planning Commissioner for Council District Fifteen.
Glad to have you aboard. Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Item one A is on the desk now. Can we go back to one A?
Are we back to one A with the circulation of the amendment on, okay, colleagues? Ms. Perry, you want to get that one passed, I can tell.
Yeah, this is on the Central Avenue Streets Gate, the undergrounding of the utilities, and the resolution with the technical corrections as requested by Department of Transportation are now here in the language, and I just asked for an I vote.
Colleagues, any questions? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll tablet to vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, Ms. Perry.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I did get an answer from staff. There's another item that's coming in a few days that will supplant this item, so you can remove number six. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number five. Item number five called special by Councilmember Alakon.
Members, this item is another in a large number of benefits that we are seeking to make Los Angeles more competitive, to bring filming back to Los Angeles. This specifically will eliminate one dollar and thirty cents per thousand dollars of costs that are imposed on productions of more than two point five million and beyond. So there are some people who have, are visiting Los Angeles who would like to speak. If I could ask for a ten-minute public hearing to allow them to speak, that would be appreciated.
Without opposition, that's fine. Mr. Alakon, are they?
I believe you have cards.
I think we have cards.
We have cards.
Mr. Alakon, we do have cards on this matter. Ron Gubler, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. We see you on television with all the celebrities, all the stars of Hollywood.
That's right. Good morning, councilmembers. Ron Gubler, President, CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and we are delighted to be here in support of this measure today. This sends a wonderful message to the entertainment industry. As we all know, we've been working for many years to retain the industry in Los Angeles. It's where it has always thrived and where its home is. I was on the BTAC Advisory Committee five years ago when the first threshold was set at two point five million dollars. At that time, they did not go any further. This, however, is a step that is in the right direction to raise that threshold that will really help small independent production companies. A few dollars makes a big difference in keeping production in the city. Might also mention, in Hollywood, we've seen, just in the last couple of years, we're beginning to see a migration back to Hollywood and to the city of Los Angeles from companies that had moved to Santa Monica and outside of the city. This will send a great message. We urge you to pass it. It's a step in the right direction in retaining businesses in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Maya Zettler, on behalf of ViCA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. ViCA is here to express our strong support for raising the entertainment production cap to five million. In this current economic downturn, it is vital for the city of Los Angeles to spur business in order to help create jobs and help grow our economy. One of the specific goals laid out by ViCA is to stem the tide of runaway production, and we believe strongly that the entertainment industry is an important component of our city's economy. Thus, we have supported raising the minimum threshold to five million. We believe that raising this cap would provide significant tax savings to small and medium-sized businesses, affecting just over half of the commercial production companies, as well as other boutique firms in this industry. We ask that you support raising this cap today, and we hope that you will move quickly on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of Councilman Alakon's proposal here. It's very important for the commercial production industry. I represent the Association of Independent Commercial Producers. I'm the president and CEO of a national organization of over three hundred production companies. Throughout the years, there's been a large movement, not just within the country, but outside the country, to attract the lucrative business that is commercial production. These small and mid-sized companies need to look to every dollar they can get to actually compete within the business of advertising and in the production area that has so many well-paying jobs. This proposal is just another one of the pieces that says that Los Angeles is willing to step up and compete to keep those jobs that have long been moving away, to bring them back. And again, you know, the commercial industry has been hit in so many different ways by the changing landscape of media to everything else, so this sort of movement that dovetails and comes together here in the heart of the production of the United States is a very, very important message that needs to be sent to the industry, but also sent to Sacramento to also follow up on your initiative here and say, we need to do more to attract these jobs back. This is a business where we estimate that every dollar spent is about two dollars in economic development and spurs on your economy in so many different ways for these well-paying jobs. So again, I commend Councilmember Alakon for taking on this initiative, his staff for working so diligently, especially Becca, for bringing these together and actually creating the data that was needed to show how important this will be at a very low cost to the city. So thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you to the council. Thank you to Chairman Alakon on this important effort. The Jobs Committee has been really in the forefront of moving forward ideas and initiatives to attract and retain the motion picture business in Los Angeles, and this is another one of the efforts. It's a twenty-five percent tax cut at the top end, and it raises the floor at which the minimum tax will apply to smaller and medium-sized companies. It's a great accomplishment. I urge everyone to support it, and thanks to the council and to Chairman Alakon for his leadership on this issue. And just a personal note, happy birthday to Councilmember Parks. My son shares the same birthday. He's twelve today, so we'll remember this now. We have birthday twins. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Chief Parks. We miss you over at LAPD. Forty-nine years old today. Forty-nine. As, I'm forty-nine, too. Just leave it at forty-nine. As far as HollywoodHighlands.org, what we're talking about here, look, I've been in Hollywood since nine, living since seventy-six, visiting since sixty-six. This doesn't help the mom and pop productions. First of all, most of them are pirate productions. They don't pay anything. This helps the studios. This is for the studios. The studios who make more money, they're getting huge profits unlike anything, billions of dollars, and it helps the commercial productions, the people who do commercials. And who pays for the commercials? The corporations. This has not, and as the city cuts people off welfare, as the city, you know, I can't believe this city. We export everything. We had a gang war in Pasadena the other day between the USC gang and the UCLA gang, with people being stabbed. And I don't blame it on Pasadena. You exported that. This city is out of control. Even white people are stabbing one another.
Mr. Walsh, it's about the movie industry, not about stabbing.
With that, I'm leaving. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you for your comments. They could make a movie out of that someday. Jennifer Hatter. Jennifer Screen Actors Guild. Jennifer, Screen Actors Guild. You get some movie scripts here.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Heater, and I'm from the Screen Actors Guild. We represent more than 70,000 members who live and work in California, and I'm here today to speak in strong support of this motion. We are in strong support of any motion that helps it, make it easier to film in the city of Los Angeles, so I urge you to support this motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Alakon, you want to let Mr. Kocorian speak, and then you can close it? Or you want to go first?
First of all, Mr. Walsh, this is specifically not for the big studios. This is specifically for productions of 2.5 million to 5 million, which is far exceeded in studios, although studio productions will also get a small benefit. This is targeting the smaller production companies, 535 of whom will benefit from this motion. This is not a huge tax giveaway. It is a small, reasonable tax giveaway that... Tax giveaway. It's a small, reasonable tax break that will return in terms of city revenue by recycling the dollars in our economy and creating jobs in the industry and ancillary to the industry. So this is a very reasonable part of a package of programs that we have developed and that are working in Los Angeles. I want to make note of recent news that has found that many jurisdictions that have been offering tax incentives and benefits have had to shut them down and stop them, and I believe that's because they don't have the large infrastructure and talent pool that the city of Los Angeles has. We have the ability to sustain these kinds of benefits with the purpose of developing opportunities to have sustained tax revenues that are driven by the recycling of the dollars that the industry is bringing to Los Angeles. That's what this is all about. Other jurisdictions will not be able to compete, but if we do nothing, they will be able to compete. And that's why it's so important that we pass this measure along with the other things that we've been doing, such as free parking, that city-owned lots, including downtown and under DWP power lines, the three power nodes that we established, including one right here at City Hall, which enables the film companies to plug into City Hall literally and not have to carry huge batteries through the streets of Los Angeles, fast-tracking the approval process. We've even improved our ability of the LAPD to enforce the permits to ensure that these productions are not inhibited by noise and other obstructions in the community. So this is something that goes along with all the other things we do. In and of itself, it's not enough, but when you package it with all the other things we're doing, including Mr. Kocorian's state legislation, which has had the most dramatic effect on filming in Los Angeles and California, these are the kinds of activities that we must sustain in order to ensure that we are getting, that we are getting the top opportunities that we can get to have filming done in Los Angeles. I want to thank the Association of Independent Commercial Producers, and particularly David Phelps for his advocacy. This was brought to our attention by them, and it is supported by the BTAC, the Business Tax Advisory Committee, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of this measure, and I congratulate Mr. Alakon in bringing it forward, and I'm so glad that the representative of the Screen Actors Guild followed Mr. Walsh, because there is a persistent myth that somehow tax incentives for production enrich studios. In fact, tax incentives for production allow working people to continue to work in Los Angeles, and the truth of it is that production will take place someplace, and what we need to decide as policymakers is whether we want that production to take place in Los Angeles where it employs Angelinos, or do we want it to take place in New Mexico, or New York, or Michigan, or the other places that are offering incentives. I appreciate Mr. Alakon's comment about the film and television production incentive that I authored in Sacramento, and it's absolutely crystal clear from that experience that tax policy determines where production takes place. And the upsurge that we've had in production here in Los Angeles has been primarily due to that tax incentive, unfortunately, and it was one of my great regrets in Sacramento that I was not able to include commercial production within the scope of that incentive because of limitations on available funding. This measure is a step towards helping our commercial production industry, which is much needed, because this is such a vital part of the production industry, and it is so important to keeping people employed, to keep commercial production here. This is another important step forward. We need to move forward on this and the rest of the package of incentives and other measures that we're working on in the Jobs Committee to try to make this a better place to film here in Los Angeles. This is our heritage industry, and if we don't fight for it, we are going to lose it in the same way that we've lost aviation and so many of the other industries that mark Los Angeles' history. We need to be aggressive about continuing to fight for this industry to keep these jobs here.
Mr. LaBanche.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Thank you and your staff for this effort here, Mr. Kocorian on the state level when you were up there, and everybody. Mr. Miller, welcome again from New York. Years ago, they used to say, "A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree. Go shoot it in Griffith Park." Well, over the course of time, people have found other locations throughout the region, even outside our states, and to understand how aggressive other states are, that we have to be just as aggressive as you mentioned, Paul. So again, thank you, Mr. Alakon, and thank all the industry there. We're fighting, along with others, to help keep film rolling, television rolling, production rolling, and a rock is a rock, so go shoot it in Griffith Park. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, the cable guy.
Yeah, the cable guy. Paul, thank you in the back there for your leadership on a lot of these aspects of this issue. For all of us, obviously, it's a no-brainer. The more we can get jobs in L.A., the more the multiplier effect takes place. We are the capital of the film industry, but 40 states have incented the industry better than us, and historically, we've lost the grip, but we need to bring it back. Just look at the weather today, what a beautiful day it is today, and that's why we all came here to Southern California, and the industry itself needs to continue to develop and thrive. Anything we can do to incent the industry to stay here in this great city is a big plus. So this is the right move in the right direction, and obviously, we should all vote yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Yeah. This matter is now up for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, on item number one, there were two cards in the file that we didn't recognize, so we need to recognize those folks on item number one, so let's make a vote to reconsider. Open the roll. Motion by Ms. Perry to reconsider. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, it's now up for reconsideration, and we will hear from our two speakers on this matter. Louis Reyes.
Buenos dias. Can I need a translator, please?
Translator, we'll get you a translator, sir. One moment.
Thank you.
One moment.
Buenos dias. Ah, mi nombre es Luis Enrique Reyes. Este, yo soy dueño de dos propiedades en la 41 y la central.
Good morning. My name is Jose Enrique Reyes. I'm the owner of two properties on 41st and Central. Y quiero felicitarlos por haber aprobado este plan, aunque me parece muy bueno. And I want to congratulate you for your approval of this plan. I think it's a very positive one. Porque yo por donde vivo, hay por ahí algunos gang members, y ellos son muy fáciles de ir a cortar los cables del poste de la luz para poder tener control sobre la calle. Because around the area where I live, it's known, or there's a lot of gang members that hang around that area, and they're known to go cut some of the electrical lines in order to take control of that street. Yo creo que es todo. Solamente quería felicitarlos otra vez por haber aprobado el proyecto. That's all. I just wanted to congratulate you for approving this project, and have a good day.
Gracias. Thank you. Our next speaker, Chio Abelino.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Eladio Abelino, y estoy aquí porque pues me da mucho gusto que hayan aprobado esta ley que está pues así de la poner la luces bajo en la tierra.
Good morning. My name is Eladio Abelino, and I'm very happy that you approved this initiative. It's a great idea to put the electrical cables underground.
Si, yo tengo loca. Ahí estoy viviendo en la 5623 de la Sur-Central. Ahí soy dueño de la propiedad.
I have a store there. I also own the property at 46... 4630?
No, 56.
5630.
5623, South Central.
That's where my property is located.
Y me da mucho gusto que me hayan invitado por este día, y me da gusto que hayan aprobado esta ley y para ver mejor las calles.
I'm very happy that you, and very honored that you invited me to participate today, and also very happy that you're approving this initiative, because we'll have more lights and safer lights on the streets.
Eso es todo. Gracias por haber invitado.
Thank you for inviting me. That's all.
You're very welcome. Gracias. Thank you. That matters now. Before it's for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item number six.
Mr. LaBanche, number six, you've got that matter resolved?
Yeah, I call for the question.
There was a public hearing on that matter already, so there's no need for another public hearing on it. That matters now before it's for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to items number seven, called special by Councilmember Weezer, and for cards.
Mr. Weezer, we have cards. Cards first. Chuck Ray.
I'm Chuck Ray from Mar Vista. I'm also the vice chairman of the Neighborhood Council, DWP Oversight Committee, and a member of the LANK DWP Advocacy... I can never say that word. Committee. I want to thank Councilman Rosendahl particularly for allowing, for helping me get here today, because he arranged for parking now that the Neighborhood Councils no longer get parking permits. I'm here to talk about the way in which this has developed. As a former computer software expert, I know a little bit about process, and I really can't understand the process that this council takes. First, you approve something, then you disapprove something, then you approve it again. In this case, this is part of what I look at as a three-legged stool. You've got the ballot measure on the transfer funds, you've got the ballot measure on the Office of Public Accountability, and you have this ballot measure which would guarantee that, a little bit more, that the Office of Ratepayer or Office of Public Accountability is not turned into a political football of some sort. You've passed it before, then you tabled it last week, and now you have an opportunity to, probably the last opportunity, to get it back on the ballot, so I urge you to vote for this ballot measure so that you have a strong position on the reform of the governance of the Department of Water and Power, the largest utility in the United States that does not have significant oversight like a Public Utilities Commission or an Office of Public Accountability. It's about time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to say that I'm 100% for the mayor, and I think he should take over the entire DWP. Just wanted to see if you were listening. Doesn't matter what I say, they're not listening. Obviously, we want to cut the mayor's power down to size, but this is about, you know, ask around, maybe a little smaller. Thin, too. We want DWP to be under you folks. And remember, at least, DWP isn't like up in San Francisco where they blow up town, where it's like, you know, it's like Berlin in 1944. So, you know, DWP is socialism, folks, and socialism has done a lot better for us than free enterprise power has done up in the Bay Area. You're doing a wonderful job on taking him down. I would suggest, you want to know what's happening in California, or in America, or in the skies above L.A., HollywoodHighlands.org. And also, join our Facebook, Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I-A-C-K-S-O-N.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, that's the unsubject.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. John is occasionally correct. DWP, I'm a DWP liaison, and what is the problem? Transparency, accessibility, consideration of the public and the ratepayers? Well, their only consideration seems to be, how much can we charge and get away with it? So I am very much for the city council taking jurisdiction over the DWP commissioners and the manager. Specifically, interesting that the current manager specifically wants to be known as the general manager, not the acting manager, not the interim manager, but the general manager. Okay, what's going to happen? I don't know, because this wasn't passed through most of the neighborhood councils. There was some consideration of the inspector general, but that's gone now. There was some consideration of a real ratepayer's advocate, but based upon the funding of it, that either way, whether it's DWP funding and/or the city funding, it'll be for maybe three people. How can three people deal with the monster that we've generated? Ninety neighborhood councils have MOUs with the DWP, but the DWP says, "It's by our interpretation as to what that memo means." So we get no access to rates, say, 30 days or 60 days ahead. We get them three days ahead. So we would highly support, or I would highly support, and I think most of the DWP liaisons would support, the city council taking jurisdiction on two-thirds majority vote for replacement of general managers and commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much. Don't want to belabor the point, but for consistency's sake, I just want to call it special. Thank you.
Okay. Well, now, it's time to listen to Ms. Perry, then Mr. LaBanche. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been through this over and over and over again, so I'm not going to go over it again, other than to say that this has been an ongoing process, an extensive process, series of six joint committee hearings out in the public, in the public with Energy and Environment, rules and elections throughout the city, from the Valley to South Los Angeles to San Pedro, and the public was clear and consistent that they were very interested and supportive of reform at the Department of Water and Power. The governance portion is a final important puzzle piece that we can deliver to the voters. Nothing has changed since this item was approved by this body three weeks ago, and I do urge the council and all the members to be consistent and move this forward to the voters in its entirety so that the voters can decide whether this policy should be codified.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. LaBanche.
I stand to support that and ask for an aye vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaBanche. Mr. Rosendahl.
So I agree with what we've done here. It's the right strategy. It gives the citizenry a more effective opportunity to weigh in on these issues. I want to thank Chuck Ray from Mar Vista, who's been one of the leaders on the issue.
I want to thank Chuck Ray from Mar Vista, who's been one of the leaders on the issue, and I look forward to us voting positive on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I thought you pressed your button on this matter. Okay, that. No one else is speaking on the matter? All right, colleagues, the matter is now before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Fourth with.
Motion to reconsider item fifty-three?
Excuse me?
May I make a motion to reconsider item fifty-three, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Will you open the roll on that?
We'll take the roll to reconsider. Open the roll. Close fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Matters before us.
All I want to do is send this item back to committee, Energy and Environment.
On fifty-three, back to Energy and Environment, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item fifteen, called special by Councilmembers, I.
Mr. Weezer?
That'll be room. Mr. Alarcon asked to hold this item on the desk.
Okay, we will hold it. Next item, please.
That brings us to item forty-six, called special for cards.
Item forty-six?
Correct, that is correct, sir.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five Bear Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Oh, the high-speed rail, put more stations on it, then it becomes not-so-high-speed rail. But we in East LA would like to propose an additional station to be added to the San Diego segment rather than the Palmdale segment, would like to have one at the Cal State University LA so that it can go underground from there into Union Station. Because right now, they're planning on three different alternatives, one through Boyle Heights, one through Lincoln Heights and El Sereno, one through El Sereno and then Lincoln Heights into the north side of Union Station. We're letting this monster sneak under the radar. What's happening? It probably won't be high-speed rail, especially with so many stations, but it also will be coming through our neighborhoods. However, the San Diego leg has been well advertised in San Gabriel Valley, but they've not held any meetings within the LA portion of the San Diego leg. We've asked, through the Neighborhood Council, we voted on a resolution to ask Mr. Weezer to get some meetings in East LA regarding the high-speed rail so that we might be able to have a station also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Matters now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please, Ms. Perry, first.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify for the record on the item, the DWP item, item number seven, I want to make absolutely certain that it was requested to go forth with.
Yes, would you like to open the roll again?
No, no, I just want to make sure that it was requested.
Fourth with a number seven.
So can you confirm that for me?
Fourth with a number seven.
Thank you very much.
You've got a confirmation.
And happy holidays.
I thought you wanted to reconsider once again.
No, 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 happy holidays to you, thank you.
We've been consistent to be inconsistent. Next item, please.
That brings us to item forty-seven, called.
Number forty-seven? Donna Pyramid, number forty-seven in Van Nuys.
Okay, yeah, the one I want to speak on is number X, the one about the LA River Revitalization Program. I believe that one's a very bad one because it will probably bring in a lot of flooding. Right now, we have it set up with the way that it's done to prevent flooding and coming in and, and coming in to protect the flood from coming on in. I believe this is, this is a, and I, a way to make the CRA call any place called blight. It's, so pretty soon, they can come in and call any place they want blight, and then they can come in and refix everything. I believe this is not a money that's well spent on tearing up the basin and letting places flood. This is not a very good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. That items before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And Mr. Clerk, thirty-one, fourth with, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that brings us to item forty-three, called special for cards. Number forty-three? Donna Pyramid, number forty-three? In Van Nuys.
Yeah, thank you. Anyway, while I understand the term mentally retarded is not a nice term, developmentally disabled is a term all right, intellectually is, uh, disabled is not very good. Anyway, it's, it's a very broad term, that's the problem I had, it's a very broad term. It would include a lot of people who clearly don't have the problems that mentally retarded people have. I have a friendly amendment that we include words mild, meaning for the learning disabled, moderate, and severe. But a real fellow of money would be better spent helping people with severe developmentally disabled rather than spending money taking the term mentally retarded and rewording it as developmentally retarded or intellectually disabled, which would mean anything, anybody can use that term, intellectually disabled, those who are criminals, those who don't want to try to learn. It's, I think that money should be better spent using that money to help the developmentally disabled or the mentally retarded. There's a lot of areas where they need more help, the mentally retarded are, than say the ones who are learning disabled, because they have more problems. So unless and least we come up with and make it less broad and come up with mild and severe, and please don't spend a lot of money taking out terms and taking the money away that would help them. So please at least do the friendly amendment, mild, moderate, and severe, otherwise it really won't work at all, and you will be hurting the people that you want to help, the mentally retarded, and it will be spread around a lot of different types of people who don't need as much help as the ones who are termed mentally retarded. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item sixty-six, called special for Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the purpose of, we'd like to renew this reward motion, and to the public, we ask for your assistance. That on January the thirteenth, two thousand and eight, at six fifty-five AM, Rosa Garcia, a thirty-five-year-old woman, was discovered deceased in an alley near fifteen oh four West Boulevard, I'm sorry, West Florence. LAPD has been searching for the individuals, have not come up with leads, they're asking for assistance, and we have a fifty thousand dollar reward for the apprehension, successful apprehension of the suspects. We'd ask anyone having information about this incident to call Detective Bill Rich, LAPD Criminal Gang Homicide Division, Southeast Squad, and that number is two one three four eight five four three four one. And that incident, again, was January thirteenth, two thousand and eight, at six fifty-five AM, and the victim was Rosa Garcia. And I vote on the renewal of the reward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. On that matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us back to item fifteen, called special for Councilmember Zine. The questions have been answered that I had, there are speakers on this matter, has there been a public hearing? There's no need for the speakers on this matter? I see no one else on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alarcon requests to be excused on March first, second, and fourth, two thousand and eleven, for personal business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on December seventeenth, two thousand and ten, for personal business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Parks requests to arrive at ten thirty on December fifteenth, two thousand and ten, and to leave at eleven AM.
Will he be celebrating his birthday on those days?
Uh, no, sir, I don't believe he will.
That's approved.
And, and he further requests to leave at eleven o'clock on February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, for city business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Lastly, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on February eighteenth, twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, for personal business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Colleagues, any announcements? Announcements, Mr. Labonge?
I just want to thank you all again on this Thursday, the city's officially accepting the hundred and thirty-eight acres west of the Hollywood sign to expand Griffin Park and the natural zone. Very small hiking trails will exist, but there'll be many hiking points developed in the future, and the wildlife of these hills are very appreciative, but it will not be developed, so I just wanted to thank you. Public is invited to Lake Hollywood at three o'clock on Thursday. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, I just wanted to warn every, excuse me, congratulate the legislature for convening their next session yesterday, the state legislature of California, and I had the privilege and the honor to go and be there and congratulate many of the senators and assembly members, and met some of the constitutional officers, and just want to let them know that I'm praying for them and that we're also praying for us and local government, because they have tens of billions of dollars to make up in their budget, and hopefully they'll do it in a way that doesn't impact us as much as it could. So just wanted to remind Californians, Angelenos, that the state legislature has began, begun their session as the new members of the legislature and returning members were sworn in in both the state senate and the state assembly yesterday at noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Corretts?
I just wanted to announce there's an official Hanukkah celebration in the rotunda, I believe it's starting around twelve fifteen today.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any other announcements, colleagues? See no other announcements? Adjourned motions, colleagues? Please stand in the chambers, colleagues, stand for adjourned motions. Everyone in the audience, please stand. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members and members of the public. It's with great sadness that I announced the passing of Ariadne Sokou. She passed away on November fourteenth, two thousand and ten, of natural causes. Ariadne Sokou was born in a small village on the east coast of Greece on February fourteenth, nineteen twenty-two, the daughter of the fifth, of a fifth-generation orange grove farmer, and an arranged marriage in nineteen forty-six brought her across two continents to settle in Los Angeles, where for over fifteen years she operated a cafe and general store in Santa Monica until she was widowed in nineteen sixty-two. A second marriage brought two children and a change in career when she became a seamstress working out of her home in West Hollywood, altering costumes for the TV shows that were being produced at CBS Studios in Paramount. She was raising two small children and became very demanding, when the children became very demanding, and she eventually had to limit her workload to accommodate only a few less demanding clients like Cher and Elvis. It was through decades of working at her simple but soulful trade, sewing buttons onto blazers, that her children were able to attend classes in the arts which fueled their future careers. She was divorced in nineteen ninety-two at the age of seventy. Ariadne spent the remaining eighteen years of her life living in Burbank with her devoted daughter, Mariana. Ariadne is a fighter, she survived the Nazi occupation of her village and farm during World War II, she survived being widowed and divorced, she battled and beat breast cancer, recovered from six strokes and heart failure, but ultimately passed away on November fourteenth, two thousand and ten. Ariadne is survived by her daughters' opera soprano Alexandra Sokou and actress Mariana Tosca. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Adjourned motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Joanne Agola. I was born September nineteen forty-one, passed away November two thousand and ten. She is a mother, a grandmother, she died of a sudden stroke in Los Angeles at the age of sixty-nine. She was born in Brooklyn, New York, and she attended Ifram High School. She married her husband at her twentieth birthday, she had had two sons. After their marriage, they were involved in a number of community activities, local scouts, athletic teams, in addition to being a mental health volunteer. In nineteen seventy-nine, the family moved to Los Angeles, she became a founding member of the United Friends of the Children. She's also known for her work on the Children Bern Center in Encino, and her efforts, she was an original board member of the Getty House Foundation as it relates to many of her activities. She divided her time also amongst her grandchildren and her children with her passion being traveling and also an avid leader host in one of her community groups. She survived by her husband, John, who is a current board member of the local Metropolitan YMCA, and her two children.
Ms. Perry?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I know that a number of us want to do a really nice adjourned motion on behalf of Jack Kaiser, but I wanted to note his passing, he was our local economist, and I think a number of us have worked with him over the years, and we don't, I don't know if anybody has anything down here for him today?
I have. An adjourned motion for Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, good. All right, great.
Mr. Rosendahl, you have?
Because I've known him for thirty years as well.
Mr. Rosendahl?
When you, well, should we do Jack Kaiser for a second?
Let's do Mr. Kaiser.
Okay. I've known Jack for over thirty years, he used to come on my television show, and his claim of fame for all of us was how simple he made things that were extremely complex known and appreciated. He was a very sensitive, humble spirit, he listened a lot, he learned a lot, and then he shared the economy, which is so complex, with all of us. We were personal friends, and over the years, every time there was an economic issue that people didn't understand, I asked Jack to come on the show, and he did, and Mr. Smith and I were together, I guess it was yesterday, when all of a sudden, over the system, it came out that he had passed. So I am sure, I'm just the beginning of many of us feeling what we feel about Jack Kaiser. May he rest in peace.
I have the official information on that, if I can, at this time, colleagues, for the adjourned motion for Jack Kaiser, passed away December sixth, born April twentieth, nineteen thirty-four, Huntington Park, raised in Downey, and Vernon, earned a bachelor's degree in nineteen fifty-five and an MBA in nineteen sixty-eight at USC. Found work after his undergraduate years as a forecaster for the Union Pacific Railroad in Omaha, Nebraska, but laid off four years later during an economic downturn. Found paid work anchoring a news show at a local public radio station where he was volunteering. Returned to Southern California after a year to work for United California Bank, then spent eight years as an economist with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. Began with the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-one, when it had no economics research department, the group named its research center for Kaiser in two thousand and eight. He built his reputation at the LA EDC during ninety-one, ninety-two recession that hit Southern California's aerospace and manufacturing industries. Although he started as an expert in the Los Angeles economy, he broadened the scope of his forecast to include other counties throughout Southern California. No one forgetting out in the community, attending industry luncheons, walking factory floors and strolling through shopping centers during the holiday season to count the number of bags on shoppers' arms. Was the go-to expert in the region for reporters covering everything from immigration to Michael Jackson to the business of Hollywood. Retired from the LA EDC in June, but returned to the public eye almost immediately as an economic spokesman for the Southern California Association of Governments to develop an action plan to jumpstart the local economy in this region.
action plan to jumpstart the local economy in this region for further growth. He was found dead at his Downey home at the age of seventy-six. Leading voice of economic development in the region will be missed by many. No immediate survivors, and services are pending. And I was with Jack last Thursday. The Southern California Association of Governments had this economic forecast. Mr. LaBonge was there, uh, and Jack Kaiser let it off, and he was there last Thursday. He was there alive and well, and he had that distinct voice, Jack Kaiser, and talking how we can work with the entertainment industry, how we can turn the economy around, and we had a, a half-day session with a number of business leaders, elected officials, and was all about the economy, and Jack Kaiser was there last Thursday. He was doing very well, alive, and passed away yesterday. May he rest in peace. Uh, any other comments on Mr. Kaiser and colleagues? Mr. LaBonge?
I would just say too, if someone gets an opportunity to develop a, a skill, that was Jack Kaiser. He took that opportunity, and he made himself available, and he always was positive. That was the one thing. You can be very negative, uh, sometimes as a reporter, but he was a booster for Southern California, so I wanted to, uh, wish him well up in heaven and thank him, and every day is an absolute blessing, because we just, we're with him, and I would thought about him succinctly. I said, "There's Jack." You walk in the room, you hear his voice, that's Jack. Now that voice is silenced, but may he rest in peace.
Ms. Perry?
I think that, uh, Jack left a legacy of, um, a love of, uh, methodology, a love of, uh, the region and boosting its economy, and he did it in a very direct, simple, common-sense way, translating complex, uh, matters into, uh, fashion that anyone could embrace and digest and understand. He was an enormous help to all of us. I think it's been a particularly sad week, because not only did we lose Jack, we lost Joe Sorel too. Uh, two giants in their respective fields, and, uh, I think they set the bar very, very high for all of us, and I know that we'll all join in signing on this as a body.
All members on Jack Kaiser, and I know we'll be doing a formal adjourned motion for Joe Sorel, uh, his services yesterday, uh, another legend in Los Angeles arena. I have another adjourned motion. Gilbert Diaz passed away November twenty-ninth. Gilbert Raymond Diaz was a ten-year resident of Downey, born in Huntington Park, passed away at the age of thirty-seven. Employed by AEG Nokia Theater for the past eight years, where he was known for being a dedicated loyal employee. Friends and colleagues will remember him for being extremely smart, with a wealth of trivia knowledge and a wonderful sense of humor. Son of Sergio Diaz, who LAPD, thirty-three-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department, who retired as deputy chief of LAPD before moving on to become the chief of police in Riverside, early this year. Survived by his mother, stepmother, sisters, brothers. May he rest in peace, Gilbert Diaz. Mr. LaBonge?
Just, uh, mention.
All, all members on Gilbert Diaz.
As, uh, we call that. I wanted to note our passing of Virginia Knight, lived to be ninety-two years old, the wife of Governor Knight. Uh, she was an accomplished poet, a wonderful woman, lived ninety-two good, strong years. Uh, she survived by many, uh, grandchildren, including Jonathan Weedman, our commissioner and our friend at, uh, Wells Fargo. Also, I ask we adjourn in memory of Leslie Nielsen, a great Canadian actor who, uh, brought our joy to our world. He lived to be eighty-four, which is a, a much better number than some who passed, as we mentioned today. And then lastly, I ask we adjourn in memory of Don Meredith, who was a, a great athlete out of SMU, and then also, uh, was a great cowboy with the Dallas Cowboys and a, and a great, uh, leader. And then he got the opportunity to start Monday Night Football along with Howard Cosell and with Frank Gifford, and, uh, and brought so much life to, uh, America with Sunday, uh, with Monday Night Football, uh, and his colorful way that he described it. Uh, he succumbed just recently, survived by his wife of thirty-eight years, Suzanne and their daughter Mary. Ask we adjourn in memory of Don Meredith. In addition to that, I ask we all will adjourn in memory of Joe Sorel, who truly was a, a remarkable man. Yesterday at Christ the King's Church in Hollywood, there was a, uh, very wonderful tribute. A packed church, uh, all the way through and through, and the, uh, interspicing of, uh, testimonials from those who worked with Joe through the years to his family was very, very touching, and, uh, the music that was sung by children and, and, uh, singers alike was very much a blessing. Joe was a great friend of John Farrell, who this room is named after, and one of the remarks that they made, if there was a Mount Rushmore of Los Angeles politicians, uh, there would be, uh, Kenneth Hahn, Tom Badley, John Farrell, and Joe Sorel. Because Joe was, although not elected, he understood people and cared about people. And, and really, uh, I think from his upbringings in New York, his father was a, a firefighter for the New York City Fire Department. His mother, uh, worked, uh, in New York, came out west, met Lee, his wife, and, and weird tale, and it was, it's sad, because anyone who leaves, uh, because he, Joe was so special, to go in his office and see rooms, uh, pictures that he had as a young man, as an advisor to John Kennedy. And not just a picture, I told someone today, I took a picture with President Barack Obama, and probably a thousand picture took, people took a picture with Mr. Obama before me and after me the day I took that picture. But Joe Sorel was there with John Kennedy in California, helping him get elected, uh, and the individual pictures that he had is the history of California politics. He transitioned from, uh, working in the politics to, uh, professional, uh, campaigns, uh, for many, many, and then also in the corporate public affairs. Uh, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Rosenthal, I don't know others, but Mr. Rosenthal, I knew him as a young man working for John Farrell, you knew him as a professional in your business.
Joe was a dear friend for thirty years, and in fact, when I first came to LA in the cable television industry, he was teleprompter becoming Westinghouse Broadcasting and Cable. Uh, and I joined in eighty-one, the cable industry, and Joe was right at my side for the next twenty-two years, uh, when I was a cable executive, and he would write those little notes, which is the tweet of the old days, that we all got those notes. I would get dozens a week from Joe. And anywhere I went and everything I did in that job for twenty-two years, Joe was watching my back, or he was at my side, or he was in front of me. Um, in fact, I had the pleasure of Steve Bullock, who, who, you know, was his son by marriage with Lee to officiate at his next marriage that, that he had, and the whole family was together. It was one of Joe's most exciting moments a few years ago, when, when Steve, uh, got married, and I feel family. I got a call from Steve Bullock about ten days ago, that his father, um, was on his deathbed. Uh, Lee was at his side, and his son Joey, um, and, and his daughter was also there, all three. Uh, yesterday's service, and many of us in, in this profession here, we're now go to a lot of funerals. It was one of the most remarkable, because every element of Joe's life was touched on by different people, which was the Joe Sorel we knew. He would walk into a room, and he'd start talking about this person and that person. Before you knew it, he had the whole room, uh, on him and with him. He was a positive spirit. He always saw the plus. He didn't get into this partisan bickering that we see in Washington. He found a connection to absolutely, uh, everybody. It was a deep personal loss for me. I, I just didn't know what to think or say, but yesterday, uh, was affirmation of all of us that we were blessed to have Joe Sorel in our midst for the last seventy-five years. May he rest in peace.
Mr. LaBonge?
All of us was. Are we adjourned in Joe Sorel's memory tomorrow?
No. Well, we're gonna do a formal adjourned motion for Joe Sorel.
Oh, okay. Tomorrow? I didn't know that.
We'll do a formal adjourned from Sorel tomorrow.
Well, we're gonna do it, uh, that's the beauty of Joe, we're doing it twice. Okay? But I just wanted to say too, that all hold my remarks, uh, but our mayor spoke so eloquently yesterday about all of us, and what he meant to our people in elected office.
But we'll do a formal, because then the clerk can do the, the proper paperwork for the families, so there's a, a proper process we have. Any other adjourned motions, Mr. Carricks?
Yeah, and I'm sorry I wasn't in town for, for Joe's memorial, and I'll, I'll say more tomorrow. I have another one, I'm not, I don't have anything prepared, but, uh, a very dear friend of mine, and, and some folks here will, will know her, passed away in the middle of the night, Shirley Roberts, who, uh, some of you know, who's very involved in, in politics and, and in government, both in Los Angeles and West Hollywood. She helped, uh, set up Mayor Bradley's office and worked in the Department of Aging for a few years back then. Um, she's a, a very dear friend of, of our mayor, and, and actually helped as a volunteer set up his office, uh, a dear friend of many of ours, also a, a West Hollywood resident for many years, and was on, uh, the Human Services Commission for many years there, uh, which was a perfect place for her, because, uh, she had so much, so much heart and cared so much about people, and was able to, uh, actualize that as, as a commissioner. Uh, she didn't have any children, other than, uh, her four cats, which are legal in West Hollywood, by the way. Um, but, uh, she had a few honorary children, um, and it was very interesting, because, uh, her honorary children all went on to elective office, but none of them were elected, uh, before they became close to her. Antonio, John Perez, Gil Cidio, myself, and, and a couple others. But it was very interesting, she had, had that knack. She knew, uh, uh, many of us when, as we were private citizens, and helped inspire us to, uh, to go on to public service. Just an amazing and, and wonderful woman. She died, uh, at, at around the age of eighty, um, and she'll be sorely missed by everyone that, whose lives she touched.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Mr. President, I have three adjourned motions, and, and to start it off, uh, all we have is the moment, and as we get into the holiday season, every moment is precious, and all those we love, uh, stay connected with. Standing in the front row, right here, right now, is Jim Redden, who is the husband and survives his wife Deborah, who just died. Uh, she died on Friday, and right next to them are the Rubens, Marty and Joan Rubin, who work closely, uh, with Deborah Lynn Demming. Deborah was born on May fourth, nineteen fifty-six, in Westfield, Massachusetts. She earned her associate's degree in interior design from Ncot College, and her bachelor of fine arts degree in interior architecture from the University of Massachusetts. Deborah moved to Los Angeles in the eighties to begin a career in the design field. Deborah was an interior decorator and a landscape architect. She worked for three large firms doing interior architecture. Gensler, IA, and HOK. Deborah approached each of these occupations with a spiritual serenity, an artist's eye, and an environmental integrity. She found personal satisfaction in doing sustainable design long before the term became fashionable. In two thousand and one, Deborah launched her own firm, Demming Design, and chose projects on her own terms. Deborah was an accredited professional for the leadership in energy and environmental design, better known as LEED, which supported her focus in sustainable design. Deborah's concerns for the environment were evident in her landscape designs. The California native garden in the front of her home was among the first shown in Mar Vista, and I've seen it, and she lives in, in an area by the airport. Deborah was very active in the community. She participated with the Pico Beautification Project, a community grassroots volunteer effort that planted trees on both sides of Pico Boulevard. She also was a member of the North West Dale Neighborhood Association. She successfully led efforts to fight the installation of a microwave cell tower on National Boulevard in Barrington Avenue. She joined with efforts to halt the proliferation of the gentlemen's clubs in West Los Angeles. She was active with the Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution, that's the Rubens that they have been fighting for the toxic air pollution from the Santa Monica Airport, private jets that ironically may have contributed, uh, to her illness. In fact, uh, when Jane Harmon was campaigning, uh, Deborah, even though she was suffering so much, uh, sat there with Jane and explained those issues, which really moved the Congresswoman to become more active in the issues of the Santa Monica Airport and the toxic, uh, aspects of no buffer zone and those jets just going into everybody's lungs. She attended events and demonstrations up until April of this year, when her health prevented her from further participation. Deborah passed away in her home on Friday after a long battle with stage four ovarian cancer. She had previously fought thyroid cancer. At the time of her passing, she was surrounded by friends exactly as she wanted. During the night before her passing, her last words to her husband Jim was, "I love you." In action, Deborah made this world a kinder place, loving community in so many ways and places and levels. Whether you knew her or not, her contributions had a positive impact on all of us. She lived life right up to the very end of her battle with cancer, which never complained, and even though her body raged with cancer, displayed a radiant inner beauty that defines words. When I said she survived by her husband, I might say, uh, we were together just a couple of weeks ago in Whole Foods, and he was picking out special foods that she loved so much. Uh, he was an incredible caregiver, right at her side to the very end. She's also, uh, leaves behind her parents, her brother Rick and sister Linda, as well as other family friends. A non-denominational memorial is being planned to celebrate her life. She will be missed. Thank you, Jim, for being here. I have two more. Unfortunately, all we have is the moment. The next one is my chief of staff's sister, Mike Bonn and's sister, who just passed away. A forty-one-year-old, left three kids behind and a husband. Again, cancer. Mike is right now in Massachusetts, working on the final arrangements for her, but Maureen was born and raised in Clinton, Massachusetts. She attended local schools and was a graduate of the Clinton High School class of nineteen eighty-seven. She received her associate degree from Champlain College in Burlington, Vermont, and a communications degree from Westfield State College in nineteen ninety-one. She began a career in education, working as an academic counselor with Bay State, Fishers, and later Assumption College. Maureen, most recently, was employed with the Workforce Investment Board of Leo Minister. Maureen was a devoted CCD teacher and a member of Saint Edward's, the Confessor Parish in Westminster. Maureen possessed a rare quality of a wife, a mother, a daughter, a sister, and a friend, while serving as a great inspiration to all around her. She most cherished the joys of raising her children while devoting her life to their education and surrounding them with love and affection. Maureen was an angel. Maureen was a talented singer who wooed audiences and her circle of friends with her rendition of Bette Midler's "The Rose." She loved to laugh and to make others laugh. At work, at home, with her kids, on a girl's night out, and even in the hospital, Maureen had a remarkable ability to make people laugh and feel good. Her presence filled the room with warmth and light. She loved singing, shocking, wine, Facebooking, her friends, and most of all, her family. Maureen loved and nurtured and celebrated her husband Fran and her three beautiful children, Hannah, Brendan, and Ellie, who carry and reflect her spirit. Maureen passed away on Saturday, just now, December the fourth, surrounded by her loving family at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston after a battle with cancer. And as I mentioned, she was only forty-one. She survived by her high school sweetheart and loving husband of fifteen years, Francis Bedard, and their three beloved children, Hannah, Brennan, and Ellie. She leaves her parents, Edward J. and Mary Beth, um, Bonn and, behind. Her brothers, Michael, our great guy here in the city, uh, Bonn and, and his partner, Sean Aaron of Los Angeles, and Brian, uh, another brother, and his wife Jessica, from Dillsburg, Pennsylvania. She leaves her aunts and uncles, William Costanano and his wife Carol of South Carolina, Paul Costanano and his wife Michelle, and Ann Zabronski, all of Leo Minister. Linda Ramonius and her husband Edmund, nieces and nephews, Abigail Timothy and Gray Bonn and, members of the Bedford family, and many dear friends who devoted themselves to her care during her illness. Uh, she was preceded by her beloved Jack Russell terrier, Larry. Funeral arrangements will be held this Friday, the tenth of December, in Clinton. The burial will follow at Saint John Cemetery in Lancaster. Contributions can be made to the Hannah Brennan and Ellie Bedford Scholarship Fund, uh, care of the Clinton Savings Bank. Online condolences can be placed on Maureen's Facebook page, as well as at www dot fillincomeffort dot com. May she rest in peace, and God bless, um, Mike Bonn and, and anybody who's gone. I'd like all members on, on that one. Um, and unfortunately, I have one more, and as I said, all, all we have is the moment. Uh, we've lost Desmond McDonald. He survived by his wife Julie McDonald. Desmond McDonald embodied Mandeville Canyon. He lived in the canyon. Uh, he spent most of all of his fifty-one years in Upper Mandeville, and in the time was witness, participant, and supporter and defender of his community in every way possible. He loved Upper Mandeville and his neighbors. He loved Upper Mandeville and his neighbors loved him. Whenever anyone would ask for help, Desmond responded. In times of fire and flood, Desmond was the first on the scene to protect the lives and property of canyon residents. Whether it was sandbagging a neighbor's home, detaining an arsonist until the police arrived, believe that he did that, relocating a rattlesnake from a terrified resident's yard to a remote location, Desmond was there at all hours of the day and night. He co-founded an organization dedicated to preserving access to the public trails above Mandeville Canyon, and he fought to protect against development that would destroy the unique nature of Mandeville Canyon. And he did all of this and much more with tremendous intelligence, honor, and courage. Desmond was Mandeville Canyon. Desmond died on Saturday during an off-road motorcycle race in Mexico. Apparently had a heart attack during the race. Our hearts go out to Julie McDonald, that spouse. May he also rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? That concludes our meeting for today. Mr. Clerk.